All right, good morning, everyone. It's seven AM, February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two. We'll call the meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council. I need a hold to order a roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. President.
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
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 And we have a quorum. First item of discussion this morning is the Fire Relief Association Service Benefits, and we'll call on Luke Draxton and Chief Mokow.
He usually goes first.
Good morning.
Good morning. And I believe you guys have the resolution letter or have received that. But good morning, Mayor and City Council members. Thanks for meeting with us again this year. But the city or the Fergus Falls Department is requesting for the Relief Association increase to our per-year service pension level benefit by an increase of three hundred and fifty dollars from the current fifty-five-hundred per year of service up to fifty-eight-fifty per year of service. And what we're looking at as a twelve thirty-one is our investment balance in SBI compared to our vested liabilities, which is our retirement pension account for all of our firefighters that are active and in good standing. Our funded ratio that we typically look at is we like to keep it at obviously a hundred percent. The parameters we set with the city were if at one fifteen percent, we can request an increase of fifty dollars per year. If at one twenty-five, we can request a higher amount. This past year, our funded ratio was a hundred and fifty-six percent. So what the investment performance we've had over the last three to four years, I think we've averaged about seventy percent going back to three years. And in this last year, it was thirteen percent. So a strong investment performance, a big cushion within our account. So what we do is look at the twelve thirty-one value. If we go up to this fifty-eight-fifty amount, it brings our funded ratio from one fifty-five down to one thirty-six. This was adding another year of service to everybody. So well, within our guidelines, we've got a very large cushion in there. And again, we look at all factors from a fifteen percent return to a zero percent return to a fifteen percent loss. So we kind of run the whole gamut of what the numbers might look like. So our request to the city is an increase of three hundred and fifty dollars to our per-year service pension level effective March first, and that's what we're here for today.
I'll offer that resolution, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim. Second, Scott, any questions? All favor moving this to the Council Monday night, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. And motion carries. Thank you, Jim.
Good job, Luke. Thank you.
Tuesday night, I guess, is our council meeting, upcoming meeting. A second item is also dealing with the fire department. It's a donation to the fire department. Now we'll call on our chief, Ryan Mokow. Good morning, Ryan.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Come to you this morning just for the acceptance of a five hundred dollar donation from the Lake Region Electric Cooperative Roundup, Operation Roundup that they have. And we've received this a couple times over the years. Usually it's around two fifty. This year, we got double the amount, so it's five hundred. So we'd be looking to add that in addition to what we received from the ethanol plant here last year to fund some equipment purchases for technical rescue, which would be rope rescue confined space.
Thanks, Chief. Always good to accept a donation. Someone like to...
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Accept that.
I'll second him.
Thank you, Anthony. Any questions for Chief Mokow? All favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries. Thanks, Chief. Item number three is a Lake Region Arts Council Grant Discussion. We'll call on our Community Development Manager, Clara Beck. Good morning, Clara.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you. Yes, the city was approached by Mr. Kim Embertson, who is a local artist, who is deeply embedded in the arts community here in Fergus Falls. He has been inspired by the work that the city is doing along the riverfront to bring forward a project that would involve a lot of different artists in the community, to do work that would be inspired by the river, to be shown probably in the market structure at some point when it's completed, and then in other businesses in the area. The original conversation was for the city to be the fiscal host, but as after talking to the grant rep from Lake Region Arts Council, it makes more sense for the city to actually be the applicant. But Kim will manage the entire project, so it would still essentially be a fiscal host relationship with the finance department taking the money and then dispersing it after the grant is completed. So my request is that you allow the Community Development Department to work with Mr. Kim Embertson to submit a grant to Lake Region Arts Council for the River Is Project.
And just to clarify, I think there's no match. This is a straight grant that we're applying for to the...
Straight grant, no match. Yep, up to about fifteen thousand dollars is what Kim is looking for.
Yeah, well, thanks for partnering with Kim, and thanks to him for stepping forward. Sounds to me like an encouraging project. Someone like to offer that? Thank you, Clara. Thank you, Anthony. Do you have any questions for Clara? All in favor of moving this to the council, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. And motion carries. Thanks, Clara.
Ben, I did have a question.
Yeah, please, Scott.
Was the intention of this to get it together before the hundred-and-fifty-year stuff happens this summer, or is this just going to happen someday? I didn't see a target date for when this was going to come.
Right. It has to happen within the next year. That's how long the Lake Region Arts Council grants go for. So his intent, I think, is to start as soon as he gets word that he has the grant. And he's working with an advisory committee of artists already to start planning, like, who they're going to do the outreach to and things like that. So it'll get going fairly quickly. He's already been having these conversations, so I think he'll be done by the summer with a show potentially still in December.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Thanks, Clara. And there you're up again with a market study on city property update.
Yes. So we're going to play a game this morning, sort of. Think back to nineteen ninety-six. You're in the waiting room of your favorite dentist's office, and you pick up a book, and it's a choose-your-own-adventure book. So we've been talking about the lot behind the liquor store for a while now. If you recall, back in January, we did an update where we had two LOIs for that land. Council was leaning toward... Can you skip to the next slide for me, Lynn? Thank you. There's the picture of it off of Field Street there. We had gotten a market analysis that was between one twenty-five and one fifty, and council at that time was leaning toward not going below market value. Unfortunately, the offers that were on the table at that point were quite a bit lower than what we had been given as a market analysis. And we chose not to do any return offers, but wait to see if we got any revised offers back from the applicants at that point. We did not get any. Thank you. So since that time, I continued conversations with the real estate agent who gave us the market analysis in the first place. And she indicated that after talking to a client, she wasn't... She no longer felt sure of the numbers that she had given us initially. So at that point, I was like, well, I think we should probably look for another market analysis and do a little bit of our own background, just to make sure that we're sure on the price that we're going to be asking for if we decide to move ahead and try to sell this property at this time. So I worked with our economic development partners at Greater Fergus Falls and got a different real estate agent to give us a new market analysis, which got returned to me just a couple weeks ago. And they came back with a price at a hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-eight cents, which is very exact. And also returned some reasoning for why they gave us that number, which I felt was actually very helpful to see. And I will tell you what the reasoning is in just a second here. Sorry, I'm on the wrong page. There you go. Okay. So the value that they assigned was based on the smaller scale of the lot, which makes it more challenging for some large major retailers to use. The lot itself is located behind a current business on the more traveled access road, reducing visibility and accessibility. Close proximity to an already established national retailer helps increase value of the subject lot, and lack of Fergus Falls comps makes exact pricing challenging, but also increases value due to scarcity. So I thought that gave some really good context for the number that they provided for us. Next slide, please. So this is where we get to choose our adventure and decide where we want to go with this property. Adventure one. Council moves not to accept any offers on this lot and by, you know, extension, other lots that we're also looking at potentially selling in the future. Clarifying your stance, saying we'll not accept lower than market value for future transactions. You then may decide to submit counter offers that reflect the market value of the lot to Riverbend Trail LLC and to Pure Esthetics, which are the two parties that had shown interest in this lot originally, and wait for revised offers to come in. Adventure two. Council moves to accept offers below market value and chooses a use for the lot that's based on the LOIs already received. Council directs the city attorney and staff to negotiate a purchase agreement for the project deemed to be the best fit for the property. Adventure three. Council decides to publicly list the property for sale at a price council deems acceptable and waits for offers. Adventure four. Council undertakes an RFP process for the lot in order to ensure the highest and best use of the land. Or adventure five. Council takes no action because you are not obligated to sell this land at this time if you don't want to. So those are the options as I see them. You may mix and match as you see fit, but I think taking some sort of action on this land would be a good move for us this morning.
Thanks, Clara. Anyone feeling adventurous? Just maybe a question to get the conversation kicked off. You've had... When we sell land as a city, I often question, you know, when people come to us and give us an offer, it doesn't feel like it's open. It's, you know, it's the entire community knows that a piece of property is for sale. You know, sometimes there's best uses that are, you know, all those things to consider. But just option three, adventure three. Just to publicly list the land, you know, there's two offers that have been on the table. We have a new market analysis. What would be the downsides to just saying, you know, here's put a for-sale sign on the lot and say, here's the price? And maybe council has different thoughts. I'm just thinking out loud, I guess, this morning as I think about this, just to put a for-sale sign, we have a new, you know, we know there's two people listed, and sell the property. But I'll just kick the conversation off.
I would agree with adventure three. I mean, I think doing nothing is not an option. And I think doing an RFP will cost money and time. And I don't think it'll necessarily yield anything, where I think, as you say, we've got two offers. You know, the below-market value, we put it up for sale, and if the offers come, at least it's fair. And if we end up selling it below market value after publicly putting it for sale, then at least at that point, we would be doing it, you know, in public view.
I think that's a good point. And if, you know, if we list the property for sale and then we get a below-market value, then I think to the taxpayers, we could justify, hey, this was open to the market. We didn't look at one specific offer. It was open to the public, and that's really the... That's what the...
Because I think utilizing the property as opposed to it just sitting there, and, you know, we have to maintain it, mow it, et cetera. If we could get somebody on it that pays property tax, that would be a better use of land than us mowing it.
And then I think, going back to previous conversation that you had, as we get an offer, we can look at the entire package as far as are they asking for other assistance? What's the, you know, the entire cost to the city and the future benefit to the city, the use of the land, et cetera, et cetera? There's a lot of competing factors, but I agree with you, Anthony. Yeah.
I don't disagree. I think that makes a lot of sense, and we can kind of justify our reasoning for accepting a below offer. So I completely agree with that. The other thing I'd ask is or say is, in conjunction with this, I know this is the only parcel that has been identified by two user groups. I mean, is there other land that we own that we should, you know, put up for sale as well? So it's not just one piece. And maybe there's eight chunks of land that we should probably list all at once. That way, people know what's available, and we can start, you know, getting rid of some land that's not in use, that we could reuse. That would be my only other thought or question.
Sure.
There's another piece of property that we had discussed, I think it was like almost a year ago now, but the piece of land that the United Prairie Foundation was looking at putting their greenhouse on. That one has continued to get little bits of interest, no actual offers, but people see it and know that it is there and know that there is an entity who does have a lease agreement on it. So that might be one to consider. We do use it for snow storage currently, I believe, so we'd have to work out some way to mitigate the huge amounts of snow that we have to move around, but I think it's feasible.
Only be available in about September, then?
Yeah, but sure. No.
Yeah, I guess that was kind of my question, too, is with all of city property, then is it something where, you know, you could essentially pick like two pieces of land, put for-sale signs on it if and when they go, then we can kind of deem some other properties if that's, you know, rather than throwing all of them. Yeah. Throw them all on there, but...
Sure, sure.
I don't know. That was, yeah, my question, too, is if we do it for one piece, what about the other one?
So we turn to page fifty-three, Clara.
To what degree would the Port Authority be involved? Because the Port Authority sells land, too, and there's big chunks of land that are essentially under their umbrella. And so how, I don't, I'm just kind of in the dark on how that would either be involved in this or not, or in other things or not. And then just for what it's worth, as far as property for sale, we do have that RTC. So there's that, too.
I remember that.
That's right.
That's a really good question. The Port Authority does have lots of land, well, not lots of land, but several parcels of land that are available. We don't currently have like for-sale signs stuck on them, but they're listed through Greater Fergus Falls as available options. And at this point, I don't know for sure that any of the city-owned lots are listed the same way. So we could look into doing it that way, like getting the city lots listed the same way that the Port Authority ones are, and then also putting for-sale signs on some of the Port Authority land if we want to, or just like doing a more concerted marketing effort for the land for both Port Authority and city-owned.
All right. So any other questions of Clara? This gives you some direction, I think. Do we want to, do you want a motion that we go with adventure number three?
I'd make the motion to go with adventure number three.
All right.
Second, Your Honor.
Thank you for speaking with us.
Second for adventure three.
Will you come up with a price?
I think you have the...
Yeah, if council, maybe that can be part of the motion, is that the new market value that we were given is the price?
You just round it up.
Just round it up.
Round it up, yeah.
You don't want me to listen for point three, then? Okay.
All right. So we have a motion to bring this to the council on Tuesday night. On favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. That motion carries. Thank you, Clara. Item number five is Public Improvement five-nine-five-eight, dealing with Campus View Development.
Thank you. Good morning, Your Honor and council members. Yeah, so this memo is in regards to the Campus View Estates Development, Public Improvement five-nine-five-eight. The bid opening for this project is set for Wednesday, March second, at two PM in these council chambers. Once we receive these bids, we'll tabulate and update the final assessment rolls, and those will be sent out to the property owner. Notices and the publication will also be issued prior to the March twenty-first, twenty twenty-two final cost hearing, which is the action I'm requesting. A recommendation to award the construction contract will be contingent on the adoption of these assessment rolls and the council's acceptance of the development agreement between the city and the developer. So at this time, Your Honor, I'm requesting to set the final cost hearing date for Public Improvement five-nine-five-eight for March twenty-first, twenty twenty-two.
And we can bring this to the council? Are we setting the date right now, or we bring this to the council? So we're actually going to set the date today? So...
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Brent. All in favor of setting that cost, final cost hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. And that motion carries. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Next item is dealing with the airport. And again, Brian, you're on.
Yes. A little while ago, it wasn't past few months, the city, the city council authorized me to submit a grant for an airport rescue grant program through the FAA in an amount of three-two thousand dollars. Before you weigh in now, is that we have received an agreement between the FAA and the city to accept these funds in an amount of thirty-two thousand dollars, similar to the Airport Coronavirus Response Grant Program. These funds could be used, it's a standalone, but used to really to the operations personnel, cleaning, sanitization, janitor service for basically combating the spread of pathogens at airports. So I've laid it out previously. I kind of gave you a little summary of previous COVID relief funds and everything through the FAA and the current action. I've also attached a agreement in your packet as well. I just want a note in the packet. It does say the city has till February seventh to accept this offer. We just received it until January twenty-fourth. I did talk to the FAA, and we're fine with that acceptance date to extend it. So at this time, I'm requesting to accept the Airport Rescue Grant Program offer from the FAA in an amount of thirty-two thousand dollars.
Thank you, Brian. We can do that with the motion to the council. Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Brent. Any questions for Brian? Yes, Scott, go ahead.
The information that was in our packet is many pages, and I guess my question is fairly simple. When you've got something that requires this much bureaucracy and paperwork to pull off, is it really worth going through the effort? Now, thirty-two thousand, sounds like it probably is, but this has got so much in the way of potential red tape attached to it. I just wonder, you know, to what degree, or do we come out even on this, or do we come out ahead?
Well, just like others, if we don't think, you know, there's always, if we decline this offer, but this grant agreement that's before you in your packet is very similar to the entitlement grant offerings as far as all the red tape included in them. So we're pretty accustomed to some of these items that's enclosed in that agreement, so... And I usually, you know, have the assistance of SCA to help ensure the closeout documentation, all those things that everything's covered when we're doing the final submission. But yes, I agree, they're quite extensive.
Yeah, there's a lot of the stuff in there. You wouldn't think it has anything to do with the airport specifically. Really something, so, okay.
Yes, it is.
Thanks, Scott.
I would just like to, again, take down from you to thank Brian for all of his hard work on this. I've talked to Sander and some members... Oh.
Microphone. I just wanted to take it up to me to thank Brian for all of his work on this. I've talked with Sander and members of the Airport Advisory Committee, all of whom have told me that Brian's just done a great job, been on point, and really a good partnership there. So thank you, Brian. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thanks. So we have a motion in a second to bring this to the council. On favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Carries. Item number seven deals with redistricting. We'll call our city administrator, Andrew Trump-Seth. Good morning, Andrew.
Morning, Your Honor, council members, committee members. We're going to play a game this morning. Choose your adventure.
Who gets to keep their seat?
No, all kidding aside, every ten years, we have to redraw the boundaries of our election districts, which in the city of Fergus Falls is four wards and two precincts within each of those wards for eight total precincts. This happens after the census and reflects the city's population as of April first, 2020. You all know that the city's population as of April first, 2020, was deemed to be fourteen thousand, one hundred and seventeen people. So it was neat to hit that fourteen thousand population mark for the first time, and now staff has been working hard to identify a map that equally distributes the ward boundaries to include those people. I will just mention real quick, the state released their maps yesterday, so if you've probably read something about it in the paper or on the news, it's kind of been an interesting twenty-four, twenty hours that was released yesterday at noon, and the timing is just perfect for us to have this conversation this morning. For cities that have council members that are elected by ward, our redistricting process must be complete nineteen weeks prior to the primary election, which in this case in 2022 is by March twenty-ninth. What we need to do related to these district or these boundary changes is have the city attorney draft changes to the city code, which would establish these new wards and boundaries. We also need to, on Tuesday night, solidify and establish where the polling places are going to be within the four wards. As I mentioned, staff from administration, community development, and GIS have been working closely, not only internally, but also with the county auditor. We want to ensure that our boundaries correspond appropriately with the commissioner boundaries from the county. And I will note, this is probably ninety-nine point eight percent complete. There may be a slight shift in precinct lines in Ward One as the county finalizes their maps to ensure that if there's a portion of Ward One that remains within a commissioner district other than the Fergus Falls Commissioner District, that will all fall within one precinct. So we don't have a major amount of chaos or source of chaos on Election Day where there's only a few people from a certain precinct having to vote there, others here, and have multiple ballots within the same precinct. So there's the opportunity for that line to shift ever so slightly, but we think this is pretty darned close to where we're at. If you look at the bottom of the memo here, we're very close on having even precincts, which is the most important part of this process. Our staff did a very good job of identifying lines that would accommodate this even split. And really, when we look at this, there's two goals in mind. One is to get these numbers as close as we possibly can, and two is to use major roads or boundaries so it's easy for folks to know what ward they fall into. We don't give consideration to anything else beyond that. So that goes to say that the proposed boundaries may impact some current city council members in the ward that they currently live in. You all can kind of look at the map and see where you're at. I think it may impact three of you if I know where you all live correctly. So with that being said, if you did change wards and you're currently within a term, you finish out your existing term, and if you're going to run again when your term expires, you would have to run within the new ward. If your term is expiring this year, you would have to be on the ballot in the new ward if the council adopts these maps. I just want to make that clear for everybody. And then also, we have to redistrict our wards within sixty days of the state being redistricted, and that's why I mentioned earlier that yesterday was the day that that was released. We have sixty days to do that, and we certainly have enough time if we direct the city attorney to begin work on this, which is what we're proposing to do on Tuesday night, and then we'll have the first and second reading happen in March. Should be good. Like I mentioned, we also need to reaffirm polling places. None of these have changed, which is good. Ward One, Fergus Falls Public Library. Ward Two, the YMCA. Ward Three, M State. And Ward Four will be at the Bigwood Event Center. So this morning, we certainly will answer and entertain any questions related to the maps, but the direction or the motion we're looking for is having the attorney draft these changes to code and then a resolution on Tuesday night establishing these polling places. So we have both maps, the proposed map here in 2022 on the screen now, and then the other tab is the existing map, which was created ten years ago in 2012. So I don't know if there's any questions on that, or if folks, you know, certainly take the opportunity between now and Tuesday to look at that closer and see if you have any thoughts.
And it's really on the process. It's not on the map itself. Just, I need, just to clarify that that's a staff, that there's no political considerations, there's no changing, you know, just like the judge panel or the panels of judges that released the maps yesterday were very clear in their, you know, in their reasoning, it's little change is possible. It's just to simply get the numbers in each district. It's not a political exercise at all, so...
None at all, and that's the main consideration is related to equal population.
Absolutely. Lynn?
Our population did have a pretty significant increase over the last ten years, but we had a lot of panic stations. And then we have that ninth precinct with the Woodland Heights neighborhood. There's about two hundred and sixty builders there, so that really skewed Ward Two as being a lot bigger than other wards. So this got rid of that ninth precinct, so we have about five less judges we have to train and serve as well, so a little costing.
Thanks, Lynn. Thanks, Andrew, and I think you mentioned Community Development, Clara, for your work on this, and...
And Mark Jorgensen, too. I just, I would be off base if I didn't mention his name. He does a lot of work, and, you know, he put a lot of different iterations of this together, and we landed on the one that we felt was, like I mentioned, along boundary lines that are easily identifiable, major roads, in ways that folks could clearly understand where they're at and where they're expected to vote.
Sure. And so if anyone has any questions, but this process is changing city code, so it starts[1706.51] And so if anyone has any questions, but this process is changing city code, so it starts, we're making a recommendation to have the city attorney start drafting that, I think, which on Tuesday night.
I'll go for that, Your Honor.
Thanks, Jim.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Anthony. Scott, did you have a question?
I haven't seen the maps that were released yesterday, but, uh, apparently we're not on any line that the state has drawn to separate districts. Nothing splits the town like in some cities where you'll have, the town gets divided, you know, into two different districts. We're still wholly within the given districts that we're present before.
Yeah, we're right, we're right in the middle of nine A, House District and, um, nine Senate Districts. So we're right in the middle of-
Still, we're in a good spot.
It looks a lot different. And if you see a map, um, our new House District-
Grant, Wilken, Traverse Counties.
Yep, all of Grant, all of Wilken, all of Traverse, and then basically Fergus, Pelican Rapids and, and just very western Ottertail Counties. We are the population centers still, but looks much different. Purim and, and other places, Ottertail County are not alone within the same House District. And our Senate District also looks a lot different in the sense that Alexandria is now in a different district. Before, we had a shared district with Alexandria and Senator Ingberthson was the senator. Now it, uh, shifts west again like, uh, like the House Districts. So it's gonna be interesting.
And there was some, you know, some efforts on, by the county to keep the county as a whole. I mean, you know, there's geographic boundary lines and there's communities within the county that work together and that didn't happen. You know, they, they did split the Ottertail County, but, um, it is what it is. Like, you know, they make the maps and we live with them, so.
Yeah, just, just to reiterate, um, there are five judge panel at the state level. The legislature was unable to come to consensus.
They have for, it's a hundred and forty years, they haven't been able to draw the maps.
And no surprise to anyone, so I think that, uh, that's something to celebrate here on the local level though, because you guys are able to, I mean, granted, you know, we provide the map, but you're able to, to say, yeah, this makes sense and we're not trying to gerrymander, we're not trying to, to, you know, manipulate anything. This is just what makes sense from a numbers perspective. And at the state level, they have to rely on five nonpartisan judges to just tell them how it's gonna be and we don't want any part of that, so.
Anyone have any other questions for Andrew or any staff? So we can start this process by making a motion to the council. We have that motion in a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
And, uh, final item on the agenda is a update on the Aquatic Center proposal.
Yeah, thank you, your honor. We do have one additional item after, um, if you, if we have time. So, um, at the last council meeting, we talked about, uh, proposal from Bolton and Mink related to the Aquatic Center, which had, uh, three options. After a, a good discussion, the council really honed their focus in on exploring one of those options and that was a, what I would say, a compromise option, looking at a aquatic center, uh, with a budget of nine to eleven million dollars. As we talked about last Monday, we currently have authorization from the legislature to seek a sales tax up to seven point eight million dollars and, uh, council was asked, or council asked staff to initiate the legislative action to be able to increase the authorization related to this. Um, that has started. Uh, the mayor has had good conversations, I have had good conversations and the feedback that we've received is, um, they're certainly willing to consider the increase, but to keep it under ten million dollars. So we will be introducing a bill, um, looking at nine point nine million dollars. So it would go from seven point eight up to nine point nine. And then any additional work that Bolton and Mink would do would have to fit that scope or like we talked about last time, if, if the number was higher than that, there would absolutely have to be a fundraising component to cover those additional costs. So, um, that's that. We, uh, were asked to provide a revised work scope, including just the option for the nine to eleven million dollar aquatic center. That is, uh, enclosed in your packet for your reference. The number didn't drop as much as, as you would anticipate and simply because, um, the third option that was on the last proposal is really work that's already been done. We have the drawings and budget for the previously thought to be seven point eight million dollar project, which is now over twelve million dollars. So, um, by eliminating that option, you didn't really save any money because that work has essentially been done. So, um, the new fee would be a lump sum, not exceed twenty-seven thousand, fifty dollars. As I mentioned, the original fee was closer to thirty-seven thousand, so about a ten thousand dollar savings by eliminating the first option. Uh, there's also an option to add renderings on at an additional fee of four thousand dollars. And I would just say that if we wish to proceed, um, with this work and we intend to put this on the ballot in November, we, we more or less have to do the renderings because that's what the public is gonna be able to look at and, and see what we're actually proposing. So if we plan to move forward with this project, I think that's an option that we have to go with. Um, honestly, I think we're at a point where staff needs direction from the whole council as to whether or not they wish to proceed with this work. Um, if we don't proceed with this work, I don't see a path forward, having this on the ballot in November. And if we do proceed with this work, I think it's, um, coupled with the legislative requests that we need, it's, it's really the totality of the work that needs to be done to get this thing to a place where it's ready to be voted on. So this would be the last, um, expenditure, the last request the staff would make related to this. We would have all the information we need, the renderings we need, assuming we have the legislative authorization, we could go forward, uh, in November and let the voters decide how we want to proceed. So it's up to the council now if they want to invest this additional, uh, twenty-seven thousand, which, um, with the extra four thousand is, is about thirty-one thousand dollars, um, to move forward with this on the ballot this November.
Thanks, Andrew. Um, so questions, comments?
The question on the, on the nine point nine, then, does that include the interest?
No.
Or is the interest on top of that?
Uh, the way the legislation will read, it's, it's nine point nine principal and then we have the authorization to collect, um, whatever interest payments are necessary and then cost of issuance. So we, it's, the, the dollar amount's actually gonna be larger than nine point nine total, but, um, the legislation includes the, the principal cost of the project.
And, and for, for Tuesday night, I mean, can we get what that cost will be and as well as how much we've spent thus far?
Yeah, we probably have that right now. So to date, we have spent sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. So if you add that thirty-one thousand, fifty dollars, you're up to just about ninety-seven thousand total.
Was there a, I mean, you may be gonna get to, was there, there was some funding upfront that, that's kind of kicked off that, were it twenty thousand dollars?
Twenty thousand left over from the first go-around years ago. I think twenty thousand is correct.
Sure.
Um, so if we're looking at the Aquatic Center and the Day Lagoon Park, we'd need to collect sales tax for about fifteen years. Um, and we would collect about a total of about twenty point five million dollars over that fifteen years for those two projects, so. Cause that's, you know, we have a principal between the two projects of fifteen point one million. You add the bond issuance costs, you're up to about fifteen point three. Then you add the interest on top and you're up to that twenty point five for round numbers, so. Interest rate, we have in here three point two five, um, which is higher. If we were to do it exactly today, it'd maybe be around one point seven five. We're talking with our bonding people, it's, of course, better to be conservative on this point and if we see interest rates rising in the coming year, we don't know where they're gonna go. So that's why we use three point two five back when we went to the legislature the first time, so we're just keeping that in at the same time to have a conservative estimate on interest cost.
Scott, did you have a question? Comment?
I'd like to make the motion that we go ahead with this, including the four thousand for the renderings.
Thank you, Scott. Someone like, Caroline, second? Any, bring this to the council on Tuesday night? Any, um, questions?
I, I think, uh, I mean, I'll say my comments for Tuesday night, otherwise just gonna repeat them. So.
Is there anything additional that council wants between now and Tuesday night related to this, to your comments? Are you just gonna make comments?
I, I mean, mainly, mainly comments, but, but I mean, I wanted obviously the cost that we've spent thus far.
And you're good with that.
And that, that's good enough. Thank you, Will.
Got it.
Thanks, Anthony. All in favor of a motion to bring this to the council on Tuesday night, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
That motion carries. And the, one more item? Ryan? Secret item.
Yes, thank you, your honor. Um, this is in regards to memo that's being handed out right now is in regards to Public Improvement nine, three, four, nine. This is the Airport Runway Taxiway Apron Crackville Joint Repair Project. Consider general maintenance on our taxiway and runway thirteen thirty-one. Um, the project plans, if recall, S C H, uh, council did authorize S C H to proceed with this project. The project plans are substantially completed. The engineer's estimate of probable cost is about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Uh, therefore, the city must publicly advertise minimum ten days for, of bids. Uh, if, except, you know, we're planning on setting a bid opening for late February, early March. Uh, once we get these bids, this will be, those will be integrated with all of our total project costs. If recall, you know, airport grant programs prior to the submission, which I know on April eleventh, twenty twenty-two, we have to know all total project costs, which includes